Good morning, everyone. It is Friday, May the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is seven oh one A M. It is the last day of school and the last school board meeting of the Oak School Athens School Year here at Oak's Public Schools. So this is a meeting of the regular board meeting of the Oak School Board. Let's please stand and do a standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda is in your packet. There are no changes or additions that I'm aware of. Is there an motion to approve the agenda? Time but moves, is there a second? A day seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. The agenda is approved. Welcome visitors and guests. All board members are present this morning. We bring this in now, this is the manager, Jeff Singh. We have in the room with that Mr. Dobitz and Mr. Lynch, who's joining us. I don't know, Todd Graff, Kayla Maroti, Lori Christensen, Marcia, and Sweetie. And in comes Mr. Wentworth. Also, I'd like to welcome our guest in the room, Patty Jo Carlson, who is a candidate for school board. I very much appreciate you coming today to see what we do here. Very, very good to see interested school board members preparing to do the job well. So thank you for that. We'll move on then to student outcome goals and guardrails, Mrs. Salz.
Great. So we are going to focus on goal number three this month, which focuses on our choice ready. So OPS will increase the percentage of students who graduate choice ready as measured by the North Dakota Choice Ready Report from seventy-six percent in spring twenty twenty-three to ninety-five percent in spring twenty twenty-eight. So let's look at full progress measure three point one. Great. So the percentage of learners at OPS could attain a score of thirty-one on the ASVAB. So that was our first assessment that we looked at. It will increase from seventy-seven percent in spring twenty twenty-three to ninety percent in spring twenty twenty-eight. So on, in your packet and what is up there, you can see that my response was that, if you remember right, our, okay, and Ed can help me out on this. They took the test in the fall, but no one has retaken it yet this year. But they do have the option if they want to. But we met and exceeded our goal already for this year. So we are at eighty-three percent of our kids met this goal and our, what we had for a benchmark or what we wanted for our goal was seventy-six percent. There were thirty-nine out of forty-seven juniors that scored above that thirty-one benchmark. So eight, eight kids did not meet that thirty-one benchmark. And so what's next? So the juniors that scored lower than thirty-one will retake the ASVAB in the fall with the sophomores. Sophomores will be taking it and then they will be retaking it at that time when the army comes in. Okay, goal progress measure three point two. And I changed some wording on this because I guess as we started that conversation with the questions, the Q and A, it came out that the three areas are actually components. They are not elements. The elements are underneath the components. So that's just an easy, you know, switch of words that people understand what we're talking about. So you have the three components, right? Workforce ready, college ready, or military ready. So those are the three component areas. And that's what we were looking at. So the percentage of sophomores that are choice ready and at least one choice ready component will increase from eighty-four percent in spring twenty twenty-three to one hundred percent in spring twenty twenty-eight. That our hope has been, you know, that they're, we know, we're believing that they're on their way and that'll be our benchmark, our first benchmark as sophomores, that they're, we're going to be able to graduate them choice ready. You know, and then the next two years, a lot of stuff can happen, but we'll get into that a little bit later when we do the deeper dive. So we met and exceeded our goal, obviously, because a hundred percent. So thirty-six out of our thirty-six sophomores are choice ready in at least one indicator. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't change that on my response, but in one choice readyer component area. So they're either ready in military, they're ready in workforce, or they're ready in full secondary. I would bet most of them are probably workforce, huh?
Yeah, basketball area of workforce simply because it takes three CTE courses. And with taking CTE persons out at the center, they do the choice ready practice with each course. So just by taking the course themselves, they have that second component that goes with it. And sort of that, with those two indicators, that makes them be able to be choice ready in that component. So it's one of the nice things about the center.
Since we created this goal progress measure, we've kicked around adding a third one, but it's such an ambiguous, it's so big and there's so many component or elements to it that it makes it really difficult. Which one do we choose? Which area do we look at? Because they could be ready to be graduating choice ready and then have an offense as a senior, you know, at the end of the year and in a, in ISS or OSS for some kind of offense that knocks them off it. And then they would not be graduating twice ready. So there's a lot of working pieces and it's an intricate puzzle to try to decide what we're going to use as if we add another goal progress measure. We really want it to be something that will be an indicator for us if we're going to meet our goal or not. And instead of just picking something out and have it on there, we want to make sure that we continue to have those conversations. And, you know, honestly, as we look at it deeper, we start to realize that this is an important area. This is an area that we're not doing well in, you know, so then hopefully we'll be able to fare it out as we start looking at it closer and closer all of the time. So. So that's for the future. We're looking at possibly adding another goal. But, you know, I, Brian sent me a question last night. I honestly and don't know, we haven't nailed it down exactly which one we want. We just don't know which one is going to be our best one. We want to make sure that we choose one that will help us to predict if our kids are going to graduate choice ready. So now I guess the question, yeah.
So I have the choice ready framework in front of me and there are really four components. One is the essential skills that everybody has to complete. One, the, the four base pieces. And then four or more of the next, the additional nine bullet points. Do we have a way of track? I mean, I'm sure we have a way. How do we track our kids' progress towards those essential skills?
So with that, so with the volunteer hours, I, I do not do a tracking system with it where like they turn in hours every month.
Interrupt you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Come over here because people who are online can't, that's the only place in the room they could do. Thank you.
No, so like for the volunteer hours, I haven't created a system where I ask for a like monthly, some schools have done like a monthly sheet that they turn in and they log and they'll log them, all the hours of volunteer hours. What I do is in my senior meeting, I have the conversation of, okay, where have you volunteered? Are you on National Honor Society? If you've done National Honor Society's school, Student Council, you're going to have your twenty-five. Do you, what do you do for church youth groups? You know, I, I ask them on that and I take them at their word of if they've hit that twenty-five. It's not, there's nothing that we send to the state on it. It's when we do the report, it's the click of the button on the report and it's done. It's something that we could do. I, it might be, I, I don't know if it's the most efficient way. I don't know, but we would know exactly what it would be. We, we've talked about doing a an afternoon or a day of giving. That would be like each semester, which would then add up to twenty-five hours. And then we would know that every, as a student at OPS from ninth grade to twelfth grade, just alone with that, they would have twenty-five. And that would be an easier way of knowing that they hit that twenty-five hours of volunteer work. The career, the other, one of the, the ninety-five percent attendance, that comes directly from Power School and put in the, the co-curriculars and extracurriculars, those are the conversations with the kids and what they've done. And so that senior year, that's when I put those with, with my senior individual conference. I usually put those in to that. The net, the career exploration that's done just by going to Fargo, the Fargo Expo. But it's also the career fair, any career fair that we go to, any college fair that we go to. One piece that is new is that multicultural piece. And I've seen on the reports that some people have it marked already. And so I don't know where from Power School that makes them get that, make, get that component. My guess is the fact that they took Spanish. But like, I don't know taking Spanish, I like, I'm not sure taking Spanish one is equivalent of being learning a language. You know what I mean? Like, because when I think of learning a language, I think of it as your flu. Right? And so that's where the multicultural piece, if you tend to, I'm going to look for like, what's an event that our kids could, that we could get a grade to go to every year that would meet that requirement. That would be an easier way of getting a checkmark for all of that group. Because there are some kids that just are not in a co-curricular, are not in an extracurricular. And so with the, without those two components, it gets a little tougher to do. We do, we don't do anything with the twenty-first century skills. I've talked about maybe doing a, a survey with the staff about doing like an assessment of the students, maybe once a semester on, on the twenty-first century skills, like take an assignment and do that. But there's nothing that, but like, that's not something that we do across the board. We've done our student of the month with some of the twenty-first century skills. But we've also now moved into the habits of mind. And so that changed. So like, it's one of those pieces of that we have to track. Like, would that be, they have twenty-first century skills that they got student of the month? You know what I mean?
How does the, could you do a crosswalk between twenty-first century skills and the career ready practices? Is there some relationship there with those two?
Not as like, yeah, yeah, no. I think it's a little, I think they're a little too far apart from each other to be able to do that. But yeah, that would, but I kind of took that twenty-first centuries. I thought the same thing of like, well, the career practices out at the center, they do that each semester. We could do that with the twenty-first century skills. And that would give it's a some of the kids that do not participate in much of anything in Oaks other than just come to school, they are the ones that have the harder time getting those four. And so the ninety-five percent attendance is like, helps them out. But that means they got to show up. Like, that, that's just, I go by Power School and what's in the, in the system. I just download it. And then it's the career exploration and the experience and then the, and then that's why the multicultural piece would be a good way of getting that there. If I could get, and then if we did a, a day of giving, that would be something. The capstone, we haven't done a capstone. We haven't put that together. And so those are the two pieces of those, that essential skills that we just don't have an opportunity. We, we haven't given them that opportunity to be able to do it. And that could be something as well, but it would be, I'm guessing it would be the senior year is when we would do more of the capstone.
Like spring showcases is kind of like an intro to that. So like, hey, how can we do this? Can we buy this and should we weekly integrate it with all of our students? And that's something, all right. We can, as I said, check that box that they're all, make this.
I think that we're to decorate that we're not giving them an opportunity, right? So that falls on us. But, and we started to do that, you know, that's our plans is to have a capstone project for our kids, be, you know, and we talked about doing it in, you know, in fourth grade, sixth grade. I don't remember what the grades that we talked about. But we're not giving them that opportunity. And that's something that we have to give them is, you know, a chance to do a senior capstone project or requiring them to do a senior capstone project.
They could be doing, but could, it could be that they'd have the opportunity to do one through a career tech ed class, certainly.
Oh, yes, that's what some of them did for our showcase.
My other question is, what, what do you think are barriers to kids not participating in extracurriculars or co-curriculars? Do you define the difference between extra and whole?
Yeah. So your extracurriculars are your sports. So basketball, so football, volleyball, boys, girls, basketball, wrestling, track and boys, girls, track, baseball and boys and girls' golf. Those are, those are the sports parts of the extracurricular. Then you have your fine arts part, which are your band choir, play, being in a small group. And then you have speech and drama. They're, they're part of the North Dakota Activities Association. And that's kind of what makes them fall under the extracurricular. So it's Robin is the activities director and that those extracurriculars are under her. Co-curriculars are your clubs, your DECA, your FBLA or FC Hosa. At that day, all your, your alphabet suit, right? We talked about, there was conversations about building club, building a club that would be like an event club where they would help with putting together events at the school. So like, yeah. It was a conversation that we had that didn't get up and going, but that might be something that like, finding more clubs for kids to be a part of might be like, might be something that would catch the interest of those kids who just come to school. The hard part is getting the, it, it's hard to get them to decide, this is where I want to go and be a part of in this group. Because some of.
Should we interrupt? Should I get?
I, I, to be honest with you, I don't know if I really paid that much attention on that piece, but that would be one that I don't think it's come into play where that.
Would be considered a co-curricular at this point since it's not through us as a school?
Yeah.
So we're not, you're just going to cooperate.
A club activity.
Yeah.
With our, we lend our name to.
Yeah.
About some.
And, and when I have that conversation with, usually the essential skills get taken when I have my senior meeting with them. And they'll talk about, well, do I do, I do, I think, well, one student, one senior does trap shooting. And I talked, and we found out that that could work as a, the co-curricular. So those pieces, what it is, is there is a tracking system that we have like that the system, that the choice ready system pulls from. So it's something that we have to have individually on our own.
National Honor Society and Student Council?
Yes.
Co-curricular?
Yep, there as well. Sorry.
No, it's okay. I just was thinking about wonderful.
Yep.
So like on essential skills, if you notice, okay, so you got to get your diploma. But then you all, they also have to complete the career education course, the individual counseling, which would be a financial literacy, which is embedded in our P O D. No, what class is P O D? The North Dakota civics test. We still had a child that had passed the North Dakota civics test and they keep getting to do it, right? But we don't know some of these numbers until the very last minute. And then you can see computer science, cybersecurity, which I'll be bringing the plan to you next month on that. But we will be having that for all of kids. That'll be a requirement.
And that piece was just added.
Just along with the multicultural that Ed's talking about, that's a new, new element of that.
I think every summer, I look at.
It doesn't change.
It does. This is a fluid document. And one, one thing that they changed in the academic component or yeah, component to the workplace was they had that dual credit of math and English and they switched it to just dual credit. And that has helped our student. Because with math and English, there is a requirement of a prerequisite of an ACT score or an acuplacers. And so that can limit the student who could take a dual credit. So there are kids that take COM one-ten, which is fundamentals of public speaking. And there isn't a prerequisite for that, but it takes care of part of their English requiring, requirement in general education at Woffington for a lot of things where that might be the only requirement that they have compared to English one-ten, which is college English and English one-two. And so but there's, but there's a prerequisite of an acuplacer score or an ACT score to go with that, to get into those courses. And so that has helped where kids have been able to get that piece.
Excuse me, hear me?
Yeah.
Um, so if I may, because we haven't really talked a lot about progress monitoring as a board yet. And, and I'm working out of my car off of an iPhone. Bear with me a little bit here. I pulled up the notes that I had sent to Anna and Sonya. And I just wanted to lift up a few things for the board, just as a matter of course of, of a training process. Every month when you get these reports, there are certain criteria that your reports meet, but I want you to be aware of them. And then after your discussion of your reports, you will vote to whether, whether or not to accept the report or not. These are all kind of like mini evaluations of your superintendent. And so it's important if you've accepted them or not. And the four different components that you're going to want to make sure are on every single report, you're going to want to see, you know, what date is the report? What she has on the cover. You're going to want to see, are you bringing up the slide? Um, you want to see the, the date, what goal you are monitoring? If you're monitoring or guardrail, if you're monitoring a progress measure, which specific progress measure you're monitoring, you're going to want to see where you are currently at in that goal progress or guardrail progress measure. You're going to want to see where you've come from. So past data, your past performance, future targets, and where you are currently relative to the target. You're going to want, the third thing is you're going to want to see your superintendent's assessment of the, the current status, which she has. I can't see blinking on and off of my car, but she has there, I believe it says exceeded target. And then your fourth thing is your superintendent's response in future plans, which you also have. But I just want to familiarize you all to an effective report, which your superintendent has prepared for you. And additionally, each month, I'm going to be working with a different one of you to do a mini training before your board meeting with that month's report. This month I worked with Brian and he has prepared a set of questions. There are three different kinds of questions that a board would be asking during progress monitoring. There are technical questions, there are tactical questions, and there are strategic questions. And technical questions would be trying to understand how something is measured. You know, what are the details surrounding the assessment and details surrounding the goal? A tactical question will be trying to understand how something is done. Like a lot of the questions you guys are asking today are how something is done, or even technical questions about choice ready, right? You're just trying to understand context. You know, in tactical, be understanding the details around the implementation. The strategic question is really your big bucket. And that is trying to understand how something aligns with the priorities and understanding, you know, relative to the goal, what has been learned about system performance and what we've learned from that system performance. Like, here's where we're at. Why are we here? And what are the, you know, what are we going to do if we're not on track? Or if we are on track, what are we going to do to continue this progress? I always find it a little more challenging to progress monitor or have questions when you've met or exceeded a target because you've better exceeded the target. You're always going to have kind of more robust conversations on strategy if you're not on target. And so I just wanted to give you kind of that little one-on-one on the mechanics of how all of this works. Your earlier, this is what, the third time, fourth time you guys have progress monitored? Each time you're going to start building more and more muscle around effectiveness in this process. But I just kind of wanted to take a moment to, to lift that up. And then make sure Brian has a set of questions that he's developed that are technical, tactical, and strategic. And I just want to make sure that those aren't missed in the course of the conversation. And before we move on to additional questions from y'all, any questions for me about anything I just shared?
No, but I apologize, Sue, because I have here my printed email that you sent. This is how this should go. And I derailed it. So let's get back on the track.
Totally, totally okay. And I defiated, I didn't chime in right away because I'm off today with all this crazy stuff going on in my city with the power. And I had forgotten, I had sent that email to you. And I'm like, wait a minute, I met with Brian this week. So go ahead.
Okay. So number one, Anna gives her presentation before the big board begins to ask their questions. That's where I got off track. So Anna, would you complete your presentation, please?
I definitely.
All right.
No, wait a minute. Anna, you've only done, you've just done three point two.
Right. Do I need, do I need full?
Or wait, you did three point one. You did three point one. Normally I would say do the whole presentation before you open for questions. But because you've already started questions on three point one, I would say continue with your questions about three point one this time. Then make your presentation about three point two and open it to questions. But in the future, just bucket them all.
Actually, we did, I did three one and three two.
Most of the questions.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Count, right?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
So I've printed out her, these printed out. Should I give everybody a copy of the questions?
No, this should be, this should be a dialogue, Brian, that you lead with your colleagues. And so you start asking these questions that you've developed when we reviewed tech, we reviewed your report. We talked about technical, tactical, and strategic. You develop this list of questions. You don't need to pass them out. You just ask them, you know, of the superintendent. The superintendent can choose on some questions to delegate those questions to a member of her staff if she chooses. Other board members might chime in from time to time to ask a follow-up question, and it should be a dialogue like that. And there might even be times where you have another question that you've prepared, but another board member has asked a follow-up that actually the answer the superintendent answers that, you know, gives a response and answer to that question that you might have that haven't, you haven't asked yet. And then you don't need to ask that question. And there might actually be one on your list. I think Sonya might have asked one, but or maybe Anna, maybe, maybe it was Anna had shared something about the possible goal three, but you can talk about that when you get to it.
Very.
All right.
I believe that first one we actually talked about, but I'll ask it anyways. When students take the ASVAB tests, what are the fields that they are testing on and how are they measured?
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to hand that one off to Ed because I haven't looked at the ASVAB since my kids took it. I'm assuming it's similar, but.
Yeah. So they have arithmetic, reasoning, word knowledge, re-comprehension, some signs, general lateness, the general technical stuff. some signs, general maintenance, uh, the general technical stuff, communication, a verbal part, uh skilled techni- skilled technical, but they call it in a mechanical engineer. So like it runs the gamut of everything. They're very short test, um, but it takes about two and a half, uh, three hours. But some sections are like fifteen questions, like will be like fifteen questions long. And they are, uh, and then the students get a score sheet that shows uh their overall score from zero to ninety nine. Um, but then they also break it out towards how they compare to uh their same gender is uh in that grade uh the opposite gender and then also to the whole. And so uh it's interesting sometimes to see like the uh how gender roles might change uh the score, how well they do compared to their same gender of like um uh in terms of like uh oh, it's the like artillery and mechanical engineering piece. Because it'll be like this gear turns this way, this gear turns that way, what does it fifty four? And so some, so uh and in our neck of the woods, uh, boys will be, will score higher on that piece than uh the girls will. And but then uh you get to see how they do compared to uh all the, they're get to see how they do compared to all the girls uh in the nation that take it and compared to all the boys as well. It's kind of interesting on that to see like some of those stereotypes being created, you know, or reinforced.
Do they have prep for this, like you have the ACT where you can study and do the prep work?
So uh the prep work that we have is uh, we've been getting a little bit more and more with that. Uh, are you ready? Uh, has some prep work that they can do. Uh, I've talked with teachers to just go over what the test looks like. Uh, I've also went in and talked with, I've done lessons with the students to talk about like, this is why the ASVAB is actually important. Because a lot of times ASVAB to before, in the previous years, ASVAB is I'm not going into military, why should I care? And then they just vomit, like they don't care how it, how that, what that score looks like. Uh, now that it's tied to the state scholarship, there's a lot more kids that I've noticed this year, there's a lot more kids that are connected to like, oh, I really wanna get that. Um, this year, I just it, I ran out of time with getting them retested. If it's, you have to have the military come in to to do the testing. Uh, I can't just pick a day and do the testing myself. And so that makes it a little bit harder. Plus, the junior year is where they get tested to that. Um, ACT, uh, the star testing that we've done, uh. And you see plus? Yeah, like there's been a lot of testing that they've done this year. So it was, it was something that I've kinda pushed off to, well, they can retake it with uh the juniors that come in uh next year. Because it doesn't matter like between, it, they can retake that ASVAB um their senior year. Uh, and it doesn't matter when they take that out to get that score for the choice ready. If you give her. Uh, some schools have may have had sophomores take the ASVAB. Um, but it's I kind of, I kind of like the junior year of having them take that back because it's, it's a formal test that they have, formal assessment. So gets them ready for that uh ACT. They're ready uh later on in the year.
Right, any other questions?
All right. In visiting with Sue, we talked about M, the M number is gonna be referred to as how many students are included in the result regardless of the measure. So the question is, how will we in the future make sure all students will take the test? And please refer to the M number for the number of students that have taken the test in the future.
So all these kids will take it, right? Because when they come in and they test all of our kids, it's not an option. They just be asked so that will always, it'll always hit them at least their sophomore year, then they can repeat it. You even said it's.
Their, their junior year, yeah, their junior.
Oh, junior year, yeah.
The junior year they take it and uh, I just have all the juniors take it. I've never had a, had somebody not take the ASVAB. I like some schools don't require the ASVAB at all. And so it's just something that I think has just been a tradition that at old public schools, juniors have taken it. And it's never been anything that has created any, like where parents have been. No, I don't want my kid taking that.
Well, I know that it's not the be all end all, but it is, cause it has such a wide gamut of things. So those kids that are good at mechanical and and all those pieces, they get to see success in it because it actually assesses what they're doing, where N D S A doesn't assess those pieces. So I think it, it hits all those kids, right? Gives everybody a chance to be successful.
Yeah, and it's uh, and those who are looking at going into the military, they are really, they pay attention to that really well. And the students who are looking at that state, uh, at the state scholarship, they really took the the test serious as well. Um, I'm looking at going in and doing a little bit more um uh in the fall, leading up to the ASVAB with that junior class to get them ready for like, here's what it's gonna look like, here's the important, keep doing the important pieces of it uh to where they see why it would be something that they should.
If I may, another reason to put that a number is what I'm hearing is you're, you always make sure your students take it, but let's fast forward a couple of years. If you have some kind of a a change within your staffing that that the behavior might change, this helps you keep that behavior consistent. And it also helps you see, like, if you have a big leap or a big decline in performance, sometimes that can get affected by the population of students you're testing. And so there's value in the board watching that, that, being aware of that N number.
Yeah, that's what a cohort thing is gonna start to come out.
Great. What can we do in order to have more students retake the ASVAB test that have scored under eight thirty one?
Yeah, so that's the uh, I've got to uh talk with the uh National Guard. Uh, they can, so our national, so like uh some of our National Guard can do individual pieces of some, like smaller ones of it, uh, they can also go and do maps. Uh, if they're looking at going into a National Guard, then they do uh an ASVAB test as well. And and then um, or I can go to uh the military recruitment, they or, well, I can't even remember who they are. It's that, uh, but I usually email Kathy and she gets it all set up for who is going to take the ASVAB for recruiting, uh, for coming in. And uh, they have, they have some, one of the branches come in to be TAs for it. And so uh, next year, we're gonna take it October eighth. Um, and then uh, it could be some, it's gonna be something on my list of we'll have a, another time for them to take it uh later on. It might be, it might be before uh Christmas, just because it's on their mind. And it gets them uh done with that testing before they go into N D A plus or or an ACT test as well. But it's kind of, it's that section on their mind done.
So how about the juniors that did not reach the thirty one, are you gonna have them all taken seniors?
Yeah, yeah, I just said I'm gonna take, let them come in with the juniors and they'll be able to. And it's, and I kind of keep it as a a choice for them, but a lot of them are really wanting to. Uh, because of the score to, for the state test. Cause um, or for the state uh scholarship. Because it will, they need a fifty one on their ASVAB. And so that's an ease, that's an easier way for them to get that piece of it so that they can fall at the next state's scholarship.
So Brian, I'm gonna reiterate what what Sue had in the email instructions that I previously did not follow. It says, give Brian the opportunity to begin with questions, and that should be a dialogue between the board members and the superintendent. And the superintendent call on staff as she wants. So let's, let's direct questions now to Anna and let her answer or to her.
Okay, okay.
What strategies have taken place in the increase of from seventy seven percent last year to eighty three percent this year?
Um, I, I think part of, okay, that could be a cohort, right? You know, again, because it's a different group of kids, but also I think we have more focus on it because we realize this is our goal. You know, it seems like it might be abstract, why do we want our kids to score thirty one? Well, our ASVAB score were quite a bit lower, or the the number of kids that did well on it. So that was our focus, we knew it. So I mean, we've been having conversations all year about what are we gonna do with the ASVAB? How are we, you know, what are we gonna do and increase it? So we've been having these conversations even since October. So um, there's been more of a focus on it just because this is our goal and we want it.
You've exceeded the target for this year, what are your plans to sustain this result and continue to improve next year?
Uh, I think the same thing that Ed said, you know, he said we're gonna take it in October. You know, and let's see how the kids do, give them another opportunity to take it, you know, just keep, keep giving them that opportunity. Going back to what was said about the um operating, offering that, we need to give them the opportunities to perform. We need to give those to the kids that found us.
This would be more into the goal measure three twenty two.
Okay.
What are the choice rate components being measured in this report?
Well, I guess it's, it's all three of them, right? You know, but I think we, earlier we were talking about it, that most of the kids will reach um that second component. You know, the workforce ready before they'll reach the other ones because there's elements in them that they won't have the opportunity to um do until they're juniors or seniors. Or, you know, something has knocked off that too, so I think all three, I mean, we're looking at all three of them, so.
So that, that, I'll follow up. That was my initial question is, you said we will, we're looking at all three of them, but really there are four. The essential skills is a fourth component that I require. So, and really, I believe, yes, it says students shall complete two or more of the below choice ready. So if they're workforce ready, they still need to be one or the other, post-secondary or military. In addition, it says, so you have to get three out of four to be considered fully choice ready.
And every, you have to be the top one.
But you can still, if you get a, if you can earn your diploma without doing the essential skills. You have to, you're, you have to have the career ed course. Those that have the, the century code reference, those are required to get your diplomas. The four or more additional are not required by law, but those are choices that students can make and they're asked to get four out of those.
When again, that goes to that piece of, we have to give them opportunities, right? So by looking at this, that drives us to say, okay, these are the things that we need to do as a school in order to ensure that our kids get there.
Are there choice rated components where students are more successful in or components where they struggle more in?
Okay, maybe I'll defer to Mr. Myworth on this piece, but we should even see what.
Yeah, so I look at, I'm uh one of the people that really looks at the choice ready piece and submits it. Uh, next week, uh, Jordan and I will sit down and we'll uh submit a report um to the state. And what I've noticed in the two years is the easiest one that our students get for the, the three down below are the uh, are the workforce ready uh component because of, because of the center. Uh, to be quite honest, I think that's why um they have those options at the center that a lot of others uh schools in our area don't have as much access uh the center pieces. Um, and then it's the uh military ready. Uh, those are the two pieces that are, it's the ACT store that it was the ACT store, the uh North Dakota University just in GPA. And the uh, and the dual credit English map that really, on the academic side, that really got people. Uh, they switched that dual credit to just the dual credit, which has helped a lot more get that. Uh, it, some might be, some might have like three of the ACT stores, but they don't have, they were low in one, and they might be off by one store. And because of that, they didn't get, they didn't meet that piece, they had to hit the two in B. Um, but that's what I've noticed. Um, we've had uh I've, I've seen where uh this year, we've been able to get uh options even if um, even if the um, oh, the citizenship one on the military component was not met, there were still options where they could have, that student could be choice ready if they would have gotten uh a nut, one more.
The cream course.
The cream course was really helpful. Uh, where if they would have passed that seventy percent cream course, that seventy percent or higher, they would have been uh choice ready. But they didn't hit the seventy percent. And uh, that was, that was the first year we did cream. And we're making changes to next year, how we're gonna do cream to where it's not a uh, it isn't as uh, with cream English, it was done all at once and it's gonna be spread out throughout the entire year. Where uh math, it was for the entire year and a lot more of them hit that, hit that seventy percent. So it's kind of a, a trial run of how, what's best of how this works and with this new system. Uh, it, the, doing the cream courses has helped out that safer.
What is the strategy to make sure all students are choice ready?
Just to continue to look at it, make sure that we're, you know, again, offering those things, offering more courses, you know, looking at how each individual child and seeing what things that they need. So I think that's the first strategy is we've just gotta constantly be flexible and making sure that we're providing the stuff that we need in order to be choice ready.
The report mentioned is having another goal progress measure to goal number three, to better predict the outcome. What are you considering and what?
Yeah, that was, you know, we talked about that, I, we talked about it, but we just haven't nailed it down. I still don't know even after hearing Mr. Myworth talk today, like, what do we focus on? And it might be the fact that maybe one of our goals has to do with the essential skills because everybody has to get that, but I think we're still gonna have to have some more conversations and once we have our final numbers for the year.
So. Um, you know, in, in, in my court, and they talked about how algebra one is a predictor. Uh, you know, in, in just academic outcome, right? How well you do in algebra one can be a, is a really outlier of prediction for your, the rest of your future in high school. Um, with this choice ready chart, I haven't found what is, I haven't gotten enough data yet to know this is the right indicator that tells me, oh, that, that percentage that gets this indicator, that's usually the exact amount that are, that ends up being for the whole uh class. Does that make sense? And like if we could, once we find that indicator that really is a good outlier of it, that might be how we gain that, uh, what that, what we look at and really focus it on how.
Kind of like how we identified the ASVAB, right? Okay, but we were not scoring well on that, so let's target it, let's look at it, let's focus, so, that's, yeah.
So what, how many kids are choice rating that are graduating now? Like, what is our percentage, do you know that?
Um, we should know that because, yes, you guys have known that now.
Yeah.
It changed as of.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, off the top of my head.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, off the top of my, off the top of my head, I know there's, like, this year's class, here's the thing, the cohorts have changed. And so we're gonna have, it's gonna fluctuate, so like this year's is gonna be lower than what last year. Uh, that was due to um uh, the citizenship piece. Uh, and then how they score, and then from there, it was the, how they did with their cream. But then next year's is going to be, it is going to go right back up to where we were last year and probably exceed what last year's was. And then the year before is, with thirty-six out of thirty-six having one indicator done, they're probably going to be as high or higher. Yeah, one component, sorry, one component of it. Like, it's one of those things where it's the cohort, really. And the per, and so like, the goal of having the one hundred percent, I've said this before, having the one hundred percent by, or ninety-five percent by twenty-twenty-eight. If, if we hit in that, I've talked to other schools where the boards are happy when they have eighty percent or higher on choice-ready, because it's going to, because it's going to fluctuate. I think there's, what was the number? Was it?
Twenty-three kids.
Well, there, well, I'm in the state of North Dakota, the, this, the amount of schools that had one hundred percent choice-ready students graduate in their class, I think it was in single digits.
That was a school that had two graduates.
Very well, yeah. No, absolutely.
It did get a little attention probably throughout there.
I think there were, I think, I want to say it was like eight or nine schools in the entire state of North Dakota had one hundred percent of their graduates last year graduate choice-ready. And so they, they measure it by how much you increase your graduation, like what that percentage of group is. They have some formula, and then they also look at the percentage of choice-ready graduates.
I'm going to put one person on the spot in the room, and then I'm going to ask a question. Patty Jo, you have a junior, a sophomore. Okay, we've just spent forty-five minutes at least talking about choice-ready. Have you ever heard of choice-ready?
No.
Okay, what about, what, what would happen if we made an effort to educate parents about choice-ready and how they might impact, encourage their kids to achieve choice-ready status and make the choices that fit them best?
I think it's a great, great thing. I mean, we could start doing that, you know, every month pushing something out, or we can figure something out through the business. You know, just remembering Mr. My, or not Mr. My, well, they're both fairly new to their position. So Mr. My, I mean, we just started to have these big conversations about this and more conversations. Where before, I wasn't having conversations about this with, you know, so, you know, that piece, yeah.
And choice-ready, that's been how many years in work now?
Oh, my gosh.
And it does, as you said, it evolves. There's a committee that says, "Okay, what should we treat? What should be added or changed?" And it's a choice board, right? So, you know, are you kidding? I'll never make a twenty-one on ACT math. But you, you have choices to become choice-ready by doing other things.
I think we figured it out right now, or it's seventy-two percent of the seniors. And, you know, that was about a week ago. I think Jordan, when you sent me that email, twenty-three out of thirty-two were choice-ready.
Okay, we have spent nearly an hour on item two A. So anything else on, do you have any more?
One more.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. You have exceeded the target for this year in that five-year target. What are your plans to sustain this result next year, and what challenges do you see to sustain this progress?
Well, I just think all those things that Mr. Myworth was talking about, right? Going into classrooms, speaking on the importance of, but us giving the kids opportunities to make sure that they're choice-ready in those components, and also, you know, on all four of the components. I'm doing that, and I think great ideas of better communication with parents, right? So if we're talking to parents about this is, this is coming up, you know, start hearing it from home and the importance of that, being ready to go out into the world. So I think just having, I mean, we've identified some things just in this conversation, but, you know, things to move forward for. But again, going back to, you know, since it's our goal, it's in our, we're looking at it, talking about it. Or, you know, we're going to come up with another goal. You just need to identify that. So maybe that's the number one thing, may have with another goal.
All right.
Progress measure.
Question for Sue. Are we to accept the goal progress monitoring report separately from the guardrails progress monitoring? Maybe she's not there. Yes, you're still there.
I'm there. I thought you guys monitored two goals, or two goal progress measures, I mean.
Right, but we will accept the goal progress monitoring separate from the guardrail progress.
You can, you can accept them, you can accept them separately or together. I'm, I would probably lean into accepting, I would accept them all together instead of having a bunch of different votes, unless you are ever in a situation where one of them, the board doesn't want to accept, and then you just make a motion to remove that and vote on it separately.
Okay. All right. So unless there's further questions on goal progress monitoring, then we'll move on to the superintendent's guardrail progress monitoring.
Okay, so this is for guardrail number three, which is the communication. Oh, I'm sorry, Sue, yeah.
Yeah, before you chime in, let me get, because guardrail progress monitoring is, there's a little difference between that and goal progress monitoring. When you're looking at your time tracking, you track time for your goal progress monitoring differently than guardrail progress monitoring. So spending more time on guardrail progress monitoring doesn't, doesn't help you towards the percentage of minutes that you want to spend on monitoring your progress on your student outcome goals. This is more ensuring that your superintendent is staying within those values that the board has articulated in the guardrails than really doing any kind of deep dive on a strategy like you would on your, your student outcome goals. Does that make sense?
Okay, so for guardrail, we're on number three, the two-week communication with families. The goal progress measure for three-one over there is the percentage of communication events between educators that result in a positive learning outcomes. And so thirty percent of our reported communication events ended up with a positive effect on the student learning outcomes. Okay, so that's the piece to remember that that, that's what it is. And that will be our benchmark. So we'll set that as our benchmark, and then we have our goals. So I won't go through all of my responses, but I think the thing that was shocking in Jordan and Greg and I had this is that we had a certain number of educators that was, it wasn't acceptable, that have maybe made one contact with parents a week. And we had some teachers that made no parent contacts in two months. So that has become our focus of how do we increase these communication events? You know, be it a phone call, be it a text, be it an email. And, and this could have to do with them reporting it, right? What the teachers are reporting on it, because it's self-reporting on their, their forms. It's a very simple form. They put the date, they put the name of the person that they talked to. They can write a content of the message, and then it's just a simple plus-minus or no outcome or no result of it because it's either positive effect on learning, negative or neutral. And I, and the Q and A, I answered some of those questions and gave some examples of what each of them are. And then again, it's self-reporting. I haven't set any guidelines. This is what it looks like because it's just like a lot of other things that we deal with. You, you're dealing with humans and the activities and the events. You don't have a lot of control over it. So for me to define it would be very hard because you'd be able to find some kind of an exception to it. So it, it's just self-reported by the teachers. But I think thirty percent, you know, I'm, right now, I'm not even worried about the positive, even though that's our goal. I'm just more concerned about the number of communication events that are taking place because that's the relationship pieces. You know, if a student's failing a class or not doing well or doing well, they should be hearing from the teacher throughout that learning process versus just at the end when something goes wrong or something goes right. So that will be our focus moving forward. The teachers will be turning in their logs, and the principals, they have theirs, too. The teachers will be turning in their logs to me here at the end of school, and I'll, we'll be having another report on this. But the next moment will be from March, April, May, and that'll be our first mark. But that, that's what came out of that goal progress measure, which, you know, I mean, that's why we're doing it. And goal progress measure three-two is the number of students that participated in a student-led activity. So a student-led activity right now, our baseline event was our spring showcase. And I don't know if you, any of you attended those. I'm guessing you probably did, but that's our baseline data. And you can see that we had two-hundred-and-forty-three kids in our school out of, what's our number right now? Four-eighty, something, forty-three in the high school, and one-ninety-four, no, I'm reading that wrong. Forty-nine in the high school and one-eighty-four in elementary that ended up coming. But in the elementary, it was required. So every teacher, every child had something, and it was totally led. We didn't require it in the high school because we wanted to see how many were going to do it. And, Jordan, how many students did we have that ended up doing the showcase? It wasn't very many. Twenty, that's what I'm thinking. So. That was required, yeah.
Yeah, the others were just the eighth, twelfth.
I forgot about that, right? So the seventh grade numbers were high, high, you know, and we have that breakdown if anybody wants to see it. And then of course, as it gets older. But I guess this clearly pointed out, like, if the kids are not involved, parents aren't going to come. We have to have the kids involved in order to get the parents to engage in, in the learning. It has to be led by them, or, like I said, even extracurricular activities. If the kid's at a basketball game, parents are going to come. If they're playing baseball, parents are going to come. So I, I think that that's what I took out of this measurement, but we will continue to do that. Our next measure then will be at fall conferences, and we've already talked about, we're going to be, it's going to look different. And it's not going to be touted as parent-teacher conferences. It's going to be touted as something else because we need to get the kids there. There's always a time, if we increase our communication events, it should decrease our need to have parent-teacher conferences because those things should be talked about all the way along, the positive and the negative versus just a day in October that we pick randomly and parents come in and talk about the kids' learning. So. And then, but we've been keeping data. So the other day, we had a living, what was it? Habits of Mind Museum, and they kept track of it. So we're, we're still keep track of those, you know, so that we can look and see like, how did this, how did this happen? But Greg said, I, I wasn't here, but Greg said.
Really good. And we had it, it was from nine to ten. And I mean, and I think Anna and I had the conversation of like, we should switch around the kinds of days that we have events because some people can't make events at certain times of days. And so having that at nine AM, I, I saw a couple of parents that I haven't seen when we have after-school things. So it was interesting, and it's the first time we've ever done anything like that. So, you know, the kids really enjoyed it. And, and so if we keep, if we keep on doing that, that, the attendance, that people grow in something like that.
The preparation part was interesting, too, because like, I was down there walking around, and there was cross-grade level. And if the kids were having a blast and doing their reports, like, I think one of them did Taylor Swift or something, you know, so we were talking, right? So, and then they got to make the choices if they wanted to do like an athletic person or a music person, or they, they had a lot of different choices.
Murray Wentworth was one.
But those are the twenty-first century skills, and all that, being able to cooperate, they were creative, you know, and they, they were able, you know, all those twenty-first century skills that we talk about. And the kids were having a good time, and the teachers were having a good time. So when they were, you know, doing this stuff, then that's what led up to then that event that we can do to the parents. But we have to do more events where we say, "Hey, come in, come in, parents, see what your kids are doing." But again, that's just, you know, making us aware of that piece and having that be as one of our goals. And I know these guys have that as a goal.
Changing adult behaviors?
Yeah, changing our adult behaviors. And that's, that's my, that's my guardrail.
All right, any questions?
I don't know if it's necessarily a question, but I know one teacher then.
Any questions? Sorry.
I know you are focusing on the one-on-one communication, but I have an email from a teacher that went out to all the parents just saying, "Hey, this is the model that we're going to be reading and kind of the background on this. And this is what we're going to be diving into." And I'm nice because I haven't heard at all what my kids do in class.
So we, talking about that, like, that is a parent communication. And so it gets written, or the sheet, the log sheet or whatever. And, and so it's, some of the data that's on that screen is just, some teachers do that, but don't write it on their log sheets. Like, so this is the first time, that's why this is our baseline number. Like, I don't think that's necessarily true, like, I can't remember what it was, whatever number of teachers haven't communicated with parents. They are communicating with parents. We have to get better at logging it. We have to get better at communicating it to Mrs. Sell. And, and so we're having those conversations constantly about what is a communication that you would put on this log sheet? How do you decide if it's positive, negative, or no, no effect or whatever? So it's, it's all about just the first time we've ever done or had these conversations. So it's, it's interesting to, to really have these conversations about these things.
And I shared all of these, this has been shared with the staff. It went to the staff even before you guys got it and before it's been out publicly. So the staff knows what was being reported on. I don't want to take them, no, by surprise.
So what, did you have any questions or comments from the staff when this was shared?
I didn't, but I, I wonder if they did with Greg and Jordan. But I think that spurred conversations with your staff.
It did, yeah. Because I, I know, I know one teacher came to me and said, "Well, I didn't know that this teacher put this on their sheet." And I do this all the time, and I'm like, "We'll put it on the sheet then." It's just all of those conversations about what equals a true parent. You know, the, the kind of conversations that we're having for this log and, and what it should, what should go on there, what shouldn't, you know, those types of things, so.
Anything else? Questions? Well, if not, let's, let's, I entertain a motion to approve, or accept rather, the items A and D, goal progress monitoring and guardrail progress monitoring. So Magle moves to accept the goal and guardrail progress monitoring reports. Is there a second? Sire seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. Was there any reason that, should I have done a roll call vote? Shannon, Zoo, anybody? All right, next is item two C, second reading and adoption of the board theory of action. Is there a motion for adoption? Let's see, second reading to, so we're just adopting the theory of action. This is a policy, okay? Is there a motion to adopt the theory of action as presented? Sire moves to adopt this theory of action as presented. Is there a second? A seconds. Any discussion? Adopt?
Right, it's adopted.
Okay, adopt. Say, any discussion?
Is it adopt?
It says adopt in my, in my journal. Policy is the one that has a very specific. Any further discussion? I think this is very thorough and embodies both our, our commitment to prioritize learning, holding teachers accountable, and engaging community stakeholders. So I think it's very comprehensive, so. Any further discussion?
I like all the E words.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Passes. Next, we'll have the second reading and adoption of the board guardrails, which are now on the wall, but we haven't adopted them yet. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the board guardrails as presented? Heimbach moves. Is there a second?
Magle.
Magle, thank you. I didn't call you Magle. So I was just commenting that I, when I initially looked at this to consider adopting it as final, I questioned the middle one, operate below proficiency and the be legendary objectives, governance objectives, just because at that point, it had been some time since I had looked at the proficiency levels and what they really meant. And I, I haven't really done my homework, and that's how I have asked. This is embodied in policy's AAA educational philosophy, which we'll be looking at later. And that is why that, I. Um, this is embodied in policy's triple A educational philosophy, which we'll be looking at later, and that is why that item. Was pulled off of the consent agenda, so. Um, reviewing it further uh in the last couple of days, I'm uncomfortable with these board guardrails. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes, the rails are adopted. And next we'll go to the quarter one time tracker. I bet Patty Jell thought we were actually gonna be talking about money. Alright, um. Who's leading this discussion?
Um, I will, yeah, I I will, and I'm gonna. We, sorry, I'm gonna turn my camera off so you don't have to look at the top of my head. Um, cause I'm gonna have to lean in real close here to see it. Um, so. Something to, for y'all to note on this, this is the accumulation of your first quarter. So January first until March thirty-first, it is every single meeting you had. When you guys met, for example, to, um. On the canvassing of your votes, those minutes would not count, um. They would be, if you see that gray box at the bottom, those minutes would not have counted. Now, if you had spent. An hour talking about. All kinds of things that had to do with the election while you counted those votes. Those minutes would have counted, but because, you know, you're statutory required to count your votes, it's gonna take you time in in your, it's a legal meeting. Those minutes aren't reflected here. A meeting of your facilities committee. Does count in these minutes, it would be um in the orange box, and so each meeting, and I think um. Monica is eventually going to, I'm training her to assume the time tracking. Um, function. And so she in the future, we're working together in the future, will be able to present these to you. When you're in a regular board meeting and you're progress monitoring your student outcome goals, you'll see. Under, it's that blue column on the left, and you can see number one, student outcome goals. That is where. Hang on, why is, is that say zero?
What?
You're looking at one meeting. This is just your January twelfth meeting, this isn't your full quarter. Do you have the the one for your full quarter? Might be the last.
Printed in front of me, yes, scroll all the way down to the bottom, it's the last one, but it still says zero, so there are.
Huh.
But it still says zero. We spent a lot more time than that.
You, you absolutely did, so this is incorrect, that is my error. Um. So that is an easy fix, that's an easy fix, is to just, as long as you guys, um. As long as you guys want to accept all of the meetings above. I'll just go fix this unless you wanna kick this to next month. Um, but the easy fix, I think, is to, if you guys can just agree. If you do agree that the other, each individual meeting is accurate, then. I can go in the system and fix that number.
But Sue, I'm seeing every single meeting has a zero in that. In that line, right?
Okay.
So.
I don't know why that would have happened.
Maybe we should just revisit this next time.
Yeah, I spent so much time in this, I don't know why that would have happened.
You can see, we all carefully looked at it and um. Didn't really ask for your attention, right?
I'll table it, I'll bring it forward next month.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
So we will not take any action on the time tracker. Okay, and then I'm gonna say, um, we probably won't be able to take action on. The self-evaluation, because, well, maybe, um, because that's dependent upon our time tracker, right?
That is correct, um.
But let's talk about.
It, I mean. What I do know when I added them all up is you were under twenty-five percent. On your meeting time, um. I think we can go, if you want, if you're willing to take my word for that, we can go ahead and do your self-evaluation this month, unless Marsha, you disagree with that. Cause what I don't wanna miss is you guys setting your targets for the next quarter. In yourself, in in doing your self-evaluation today.
Okay, let's. So should I, I'll, I'll, um.
You know what, oh my gosh, actually, you know what, and then this is all, I'm gonna blame this on the weather. I was supposed to look at all of your responses last night, I can't access those. So I don't, we can talk about it, it'll take a little longer, but those of you that sent in your responses, I can't access them.
Okay, I'm getting messages here from my board that the time is of the essence, and I think Anna and I are. Graduation regroup.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, um. Do you wanna give us a? Very brief, well, or should we just table this until next month?
I can't, I can't look at your responses, yeah, I don't, I don't have internet.
Okay, so we are, we're going to look at items Ian asked in June, okay, okay? Thank you, um, we've had some really big discussions, so I appreciate that, um. Moving on into the consent agenda, there are nine items on the consent agenda, is there a motion to? Approve and receive those items as indicated. Sire moves to approve and receive items on the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Nagel seconds, any discussion? Oh, no, there's no discussion on the consent agenda, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no, motion passes. You have in your packet reports for information only, um, including business management, your pre-debent, um, or events from our associate boards and so, uh, committee reports. Um, no action to be taken there, if you have questions, contact the appropriate personnel. Items for discussion and possible action, A, long-term facilities plan.
Alright, so I have included in your packet again, our um. Uh, tenure plan, you know. Just keep looking at and see some of those things that are, you know, creeping up on us now, that are not going away. Um, but Lori is here and Todd is here, so what's up? Yes. Uh, Lori's gonna be presenting it to us, Todd, so.
Alright, good morning. Um, yeah, so we, we have two different assessments that have been conducted since our last uh time we met together. And the one is the community survey, and the other one is we did a staff thought exchange to gain some additional feedback from them. But also encouraged them to do the community survey, uh, so today I'm gonna have Todd present back the community survey results. And once he is done, I will present on the thought exchange. Todd, I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Well, good, good morning, everybody, um, and uh. I, and yes, let me uh. Share my screen, if that's okay. Can you see this?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna try to put it on full, uh. There we go. Um, so. At, in the aftermath of the referendum, we chose to go out and do another community survey online, very similar format to before. When, when we do these types of post uh election surveys, what what I'm always looking for is at what point along the process. Are we in effect losing some members of the public? If, 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 if the problem that we're having is that they don't understand that there's a need. Or they don't understand the type of process that the board of the administration is undergoing to try to develop a plan. We have a very significant problem, and that is because you never really get those people to actually think about the quality of the plan. Because they're still back on, are we sure we need something? On the other hand, if what people are looking at more closely is. What specifically the plan includes, and is it the right plan? Or the cost of the plan, and that we often talk about in terms of value, kinda how they weigh the scope of the plan versus the tax impact they're being asked to pay. If that's the place where we're losing people, then at least they're in engaged in the thinking about the process and uh. And and what we may need to do to take care of problems that they agree are there. That's a different situation, and it's more advanced, it's, it's a means we have at least brought your residents along to agree, we should be thinking about something, even if this is not the right plan. So based on that, I've got a few slides here to show you what the results are from this survey. Again, we use Survey Monkey. Um, once again, remember that this is while it's available to all residents, it is a self-selected sample. So, um, the, in addition to that, because the sample sizes are relatively small, between two and three hundred for each of the surveys that we're comparing. Um, we're only gonna show where there's very large changes in results. We also did not include people who said don't know or prefer not to answer for each question, so if you see the totals and they add up to ninety-six percent. That's because four percent didn't answer that particular question. Now, we began with three hundred forty-eight individuals started the survey, two hundred and seventy completed. We tend to only look at completed surveys, uh, just because it's, uh, we're trying to all not just look at individual questions. But look at groups of questions, and if some people didn't answer all the questions we're looking more closely at, it just makes sense to exclude them. It is more people than answered the previous survey by about fifteen percent. And you had a higher percentage of parents in this sample than you had the previous one. But once again, it's a self-selected sample, so this is not representative of the community or of the voters themselves. Parents, uh, supporters and women will be overrepresented in this sample. And unlike national polling, which would look at a sample like this and say, okay, let's just reweight everything, you know, we'll make the parents. Equal to sixty percent of a respondent, and we'll make non-parents equal to a hundred fifty percent of a respondent, we're not gonna do that here, we're just gonna give you the straight results. And understand that there are, there are groups that are closely aligned with the school district that are overrepresented here. So, basic questions we're answering. Why did the referendum go down? Was there still trust in decision-making? How do people wanna go forward? So, and remember that. You know, these are gonna change over time, um, you know, by the end of the summer, the start of the school year, you could likely see some changes in. In the responses to these, so I'd encourage you as you're thinking about a facilities plan to keep thinking about ongoing research. So of the respondents in this survey. Seventy-nine percent voted for the refer, in the referendum, and of those, almost half voted in favor. Slightly more than half voted against, so we look carefully at what were the reasons why people who voted no. Believe they should vote, you know, that that they couldn't support this. A gray or a dark orange response indicates it is a reason, either a very important factor if it's gray. Or a consideration if it's dark orange for why they. Voted no, the number one reason was the tax impact is too high. The second is very similar to that, which is, sounds like a good plan, but we shouldn't do this all at once. And the third was, it's not a right plan. I look a little bit more at the, at the length of the dark gray bar as opposed to the orange bar, but it it is noticeable that there's a pretty clear division between those three. And the other two answers we gave them, which is that we don't need investments at all, which had a very small negative response rate, and I didn't understand the need. Once again, a relatively small negative response rate there. Remember what I told you from the beginning. It's not about those first steps, right? I don't believe there's a problem, it's actually about, are we sure this is the right plan? That's where uh people got hung up, at least those who were surveyed here. When we asked about the district preparedness, whether or not you all studied the issues carefully, sixty-eight percent said yes, only twenty-five percent no. It's pretty important in questions like this to look at the strongly. Responses, thirty-three percent felt yes strongly, you looked at these issues carefully, only eight percent said no, they strongly felt you didn't. That four to one margin is very strong in a post-referendum survey like this. And it indicates some good news about how they look upon the role you're doing. You may not all, I mean, any district may not have, get the right plan the first time. And often it's not even because of the plan itself, but sometimes it's just about economic factors that have emerged since you developed the plan. Or maybe there's, there's information that they were hoping for, they weren't, they either didn't go get to the right place to find it. Or they were getting competing information from other sources, those are some of the reasons why, even though they're confident in the work you did develop the plan. It may not have come together during this vote. We have three questions that we look very carefully at in terms of the trust in the district. Um, the combination of whether or not you make decisions in the best interest of students and staff, whether or not you manage finance as well. And whether or not you listen carefully to opinions of people. Like me, it's basically that's because I'm, if I'm taking the the test. In in these, what we show you here is the responses from this survey. And then we compare that in parentheses to the numbers we've seen in earlier surveys, and there's a couple of things to note here. First of all, in most school districts I work with, the parent numbers for these questions are stronger than the non-parent numbers. That's not what we see right now in the Oaks District, there is a bit of a disconnect right now between at least of the parents surveyed. Of their confidence in how you've developed the plan. The second thing we see here is that whereas non-parents generally had the consistent answers. Or in the case of whether or not you're engaging people, stronger answers than we've seen in earlier surveys, we saw some slippage. Among parents, particularly in the area of fiscal management. That could simply be sticker shock as they saw the tax impact of the plan, and it exceeded maybe what they were expecting. But I think there's also something going on here, and and I I wanna be careful, I'm an outsider looking at data. But I, but is that in terms of the the interaction that's going on with parents right now? At least for those who step up and take the survey, it's surprising these numbers aren't stronger. Particularly when you saw the previous question that said sixty-eight percent believe that you really looked at the issues carefully. When we look at some of the basic measures of the quality of education, um. When we see rating the quality of education, your non-parent numbers are excellent compared with the other districts I've worked with, the parent numbers are a little bit behind. Having said that, that could be because they understand the building problems and the link that that has the quality of education. We asked this time whether or not you believe there's adequate school funding from the state, and there was a very. Very strong, um. I don't know response there, because if you add these up, you'll see that they add up to maybe sixty percent on each side who are able to answer the question. Of those who answered the question, they lean towards disagreeing that there's adequate state funding. So if you add the total disagreement with the total, I don't know, there's just not a lot of belief that you're getting adequate funding. In terms of the whether or not you're providing healthy and safe spaces, congratulations, both parents and non-parents believe you've done a good job to provide that, even though your building is aging. Looking ahead towards timing of a future referendum, we gave several choices for respondents, and overwhelmingly they said. Let's find the right plan rather than worry yet about what the date is. The next highest, but only a twenty percent was to go as soon as possible, followed by doing this this November and so on. Um, there is, so. No, how you determine what the right plan is in the future, it's gonna depend somewhat on the continued engagement that you have with the community. But it also sounds like that there's a belief that you should continue to work on this and see if you can find a plan that would work for the community. And help educate them about why you choose the plan you've chosen over other options. In terms of the merits of a single referendum plan, this is an interesting one, it is. It is, it's the question of whether or not people believe you should do one single plan or whether you should gradually work on this over time. The reasons why engineers, why Lori tries to work with districts on a single plan is because in the long run, it's cheaper to bond now and today's students or the incoming students will benefit from the plan. Where if you gradually do this, you're going to spend more on the plan over time and today's students won't necessarily appreciate the improvements. Here, people are somewhat divided. They're receptive of the idea of completing a single, a single plan and a third say it's an important consideration. Another sixteen percent say it's a good idea to do it, but for them it's not an important consideration, which is typically a way of saying, we want to see what the tax impact will be. Only twenty percent disagree with having a single plan, but a third aren't sure. And I think that disconnect is a really important one because we often see when referenda do not succeed, it's because of people's uncertainty, not because of their strong disagreement with the strategy. So, you strongly communicated the goals of the plan and you demonstrated that you had the research to propose a good plan. I think that's fair to say. What I think people are looking for is this the best possible plan, the only plan? Or is there a way of being able to do this with a different tax impact? And that's what we've seen our second takeaway. The impact, the tax impact was the biggest factor and its rejection. And as, and when we see that the trust in the board's fiscal responsibility dropped, that's probably over the frustration over the tax impact. If that's true, those numbers can certainly bounce back. And it's all going to depend on how aware people are of the work that you're doing and the choices that you're trying to make and how important you think being, you know, the fiscal responsibility is. But in addition to that, the question of why make all these investments at the same time is a critical question for residents. Those who've answered that question tend to lean towards yes, a single plan. But a third of the residents haven't answered that question, at least of the respondents, they haven't answered that question yet. A majority of respondents did say they wanted to shrink the tax impact prior to another referendum. But only eleven percent said, don't go out again. That's good news for the district. And finally, they're not as worried about the timing of the capital improvements as they are about having the right plan. So, I hope that information helps you. I'd be happy to answer questions or, and if there's certain data you'd like me to dig into in terms of sub-samples of the survey, I'd be happy to do that over the next week or so.
Any questions for Todd?
Good information. I would like to, if you would please share that, the presentation with us so that we can review it.
Absolutely, or Lori or I will send it to you today.
Both presentation, I guess, well, the other one is in our packet already. Thank you.
Great.
So Lori is going to take this. Thank you.
I'll take the next one. Anna, are you seeing it in present mode or in?
Yes.
No, it's not in present mode.
Let me just do this one more time. How about now?
Yeah.
Perfect, okay. Okay, so the other tool that we use to gain additional feedback to help guide the board as you guys continue to move forward was we utilize thought exchange to just capture information, a single question back from your staff. And, and we know the importance of having the staff being engaged in the plan and, and feeling like it's a good plan because they are out in the community and we know a lot of residents will look to them. So if they're not, if they're not in support of it, it has a harder chance of passing. So what we did is we went to all the staff members and asked, what are the most, what are some important things we can learn from the outcome of the recent referendum election? And what could we do differently in preparation for future elections? And feeling too with these results, we can, can have just some more buy-in and utilize the staff's perspective too as we go forward. So, we had forty-five participants in this thought exchange. They shared forty thoughts. And then with thought exchange, everyone can put in their thoughts and then you rate each other's thoughts. So if you feel like you really agree with that thought, you give it a four or five. If you feel that you disagree with it, you can give it a one or two. And that way we can really see as a group, what rises to the top and, and what is in alignment with, with your staff members. Just a few things, just to kind of understand a little bit more on the staff who did respond. We asked, how long did you work, how long have you worked at the school district? We have a lot of, lot of staff members that have been, sixteen of them were over sixteen years. And then two to ten years, you know, were another majority of the respondents. And we have a few people that were less than a year. Eight staff members that have been there less than a year that took the survey. And then just kind of trying to understand if they graduated from Oaks. So fifteen out of the respondents did. And then twenty-nine of your staff members have never attended. So just give us an idea if they have been in the district and lived there their entire lives or if they have moved there more for, in the, in their adult lives. And then how familiar were you with the recent proposed facility improvement plan that was rejected by the voters? This is good. This shows that twenty-seven, or actually we have thirty-nine of them. The majority of them were either familiar or extremely familiar with the plan. So that, that is good. You built really good awareness within the district and staff members. And then we wanted to understand if they voted in at the election. And here's another good result is thirty-nine of them did vote. We didn't ask them how they voted. We just wanted to know if they, they were at the polls. One didn't because they chose not to. And then four of them just live outside the district boundaries and were not allowed to vote. So this is very positive. Okay, so let's, the question that we had asked to get some feedback on, on the election, here are the top three key thoughts. And so people do not want their taxes increased. That was the highest rated thought. The proposed plan was a no-brainer. Why do we want to give our kids the best possible conditions to learn in? So they felt like it was the right plan. And then I think the school did a great job. The people just chose not to learn and, and they kind of made up their own version of the plan. These are strict, these are exactly what was typed in from the, the staff. So I didn't alter what that thought was at all. So that was their thought and those were the top three. Then we're able to take and create themes based on all of the thoughts. So all forty of the thoughts, one of the, the top theme was community engagement. So many residents highlighted the importance of in community engagement in the referendum process. Participants felt that more could be done to educate the community about the issues at hand in the process itself. The members, or there was a sense that some community members felt left out, left out and uninformed despite of the efforts to communicate and share information. Some suggested holding more informational meetings and forums and reaching out to different groups within the community. There is also a suggestion to find voices outside the school that could resonate with the community. So that was the number one. And on the right, you can see the different thoughts that kind of aligned to that, that theme. The second theme was cost concerns. So cost was a major concern for many participants. There was a perception that the proposed plan was too expensive and result in a significant tax cre- increase. Some suggested looking into ways to lower the cost, such as breaking the project down into steps or phases or fundraising to cover some of the costs. There is also a suggestion to focus on the most critical infrastructure issues first, such as HVAC and windows. And on the right, you can see the thoughts that aligned with that. And then number three, the top theme was information overload. So this is no surprise, sometimes there's conflicting. Some is not enough information, some's too much. But number three, some participants felt that there were too much, there was too much information being shared about the referendum to the point where it became overwhelming or annoying. There is a sense that this may be led to confusion or misinformation. Some suggested that the school should be more selective in the information it shares, focusing on the most important issues and providing detailed breakdowns of the cost. There is also a suggestion to share information in different ways, such as, in different ways, as many people may not engage with it as much as needed. The fourth theme was infrastructure priorities. There is a perception that the referendum tried to address too many issues at once, leading to a disagreement and rejection. Some participants felt that it would be more, it be more effective to focus on the most critical infrastructure issues first, such as HVAC and windows. There is also a suggestion to break the project down into steps or phases to make it more manageable and less overwhelming. Some participants felt that the proposed plan was the most cost-effective and addressed all the major infrastructure needs. And then finally, our fifth top theme was tax impact. So the, the potential tax impact on taxpayers was a major concern for many of the participants. There was a perception that the proposed plan would result in a significant taxi increase, which some felt that they could not afford. Some suggested looking into ways to lower the cost, such as breaking it down into steps or phases and fundraising for some of the costs. There is also a suggestion to focus on the most critical needs, infrastructure issues first, to reduce the tax impact. So those are our top themes amongst all of the thoughts that were shared. And then we're able to utilize, thought exchanges able to look at how the different thoughts, they're, they can categorize it to different groups. We have an A group and we have a B group. And they, so they split the results into that based on how they rated it. And you can see the commonalities and the differences between these groups. So on the A side, they had a need for better communication. That's what they agreed with. The B side really focused on the concerned about costs. The common ground is the importance of school infrastructure. So I think that's, I think that's really important to see is they all agree that there is, this is an important need. And the disagreement was just a little bit more on, on things about the size of the project and how we communicated it. So I think this is really positive and we can build on this as we go forward. So overall, to summarize the results, there was some mixed perception of recent results. Some felt the community undervalued the school and its needs and others believed the referendum was too broad. And they should, and then you should focus on specific issues like HVAC and windows. The consensus is that we need better communication and education. So more informational meetings, different methods of sharing the information. So that they can, everyone agreed upon that. And then the concern that the group had is about the tax increase and the economic impact on the community. So looking at potentially breaking down the project into smaller and more manageable phases. Any questions on the, the results we heard from our staff members?
You're done.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Good information. Thank you for being here. No action?
No. I don't think so unless you want to take action. As a superintendent, here's what I'm recommending. This is just my opinion that we, we don't do anything with this until after the legislative meeting. Because I, I think right now that perception of it was too much money. The state's going to come in and give us money. And until after the legislature meets, we won't have those answers. Hopefully they'll give us more money. But if they don't give us more money, at least we would be at the point where we can say, this isn't going to happen. We have to take care of ourselves. Because I, I feel like right now with that discrepancy, I mean, how much we lost by that. And that is still out there that the state is going to come in and pay for it until people get that kind of information from the state, not directly from us. They are not, they're not trusting that that's, you know, from the information that we're giving out, that it's not going past. I don't, I don't believe it would be worth our time and effort and help after the legislature meets. Well, they'll start meeting in January.
I also think there's quite a few other schools right now in the same boat that are pushing out referendums and their referendums are failing. So maybe that will put some pressure on the
Shadows might pass and what did, this one has been passed. Harvey failed. Central Cast, I believe, will be coming in September.
So that, that's just what I, but I mean, as a board, you, you have to make a decision on what your next steps are that you want to do, but.
And we don't have to decide today?
No, you don't have to make that decision.
July would be a good
I don't know, I don't know what you're feeling for, but I mean, we, we met as a facilities
Do you think it'd be beneficial to have a forum before the legislative meeting? To maybe invite some of the people from the state and at least try to put a little pressure onto them?
So we were talking, Lori and I have been kind of trying to strategize that maybe September, once the summer's over, right? Because now everybody's kind of checking out from school, you know, people aren't going anywhere. But come September, before harvest gets hot and heavy, you know, let's get, let's get legislators down here. Let's get Lori, let's, you know, get some people that are at the table that can be there and answer questions about it. And I guess if at that forum, you, we get the feeling that the community is not still hanging on the fact that they believe that, you know, the state is going to come in and pay for stuff. And I guess, and the board can make that decision. But I think we're going in the summer now. And everybody's disengaging. I don't think they were going to do anything in the next few months. Because if we go out with referendum and we lose it, then we can't go back for another year, right? So that's where I'm at, is the superintendent, what I'm recommending to do if he was a board.
I think we should, maybe look at doing that and return the set of dates so that we can get state people to put it on their calendar to come know.
So I put this facilities on my list of things for the board retreat, thinking then we'll have some more time to talk about it and then we'll have a next couple of months and then we can start to, you know, strategize for moving forward. So if that's all right, if you then kind of set it aside and fill in when somebody has. Yeah. How about everybody else? How are you feeling?
Well, I'm fine with waiting, but I think some degree we got to keep it in people's minds. You know, I, I don't think we want to just completely shut it down.
When's the retreat?
July? Or July or August, whatever works, whenever we can find time that works for everybody.
I think maybe my suggestion would be maybe next month, we should try to look at setting a date for a forum. And then, like Sheila said, we can keep it fresh in people's minds, yet that we didn't completely check it out also.
I think that's a good idea because if you're, I know Superintendent Masler's name has come up and I know it's very, very hard for her to fit some things in her schedule. So if she is, if it's desired for her to come, I know she's willing, but get, get her to schedule it and find out when it would work for her.
Okay, I'll put it back on the board meeting next month, but it's special.
All right, Anna, just one more, one more thing too, is we did, we do have the, our website still live. We just, we just, just changed it to one page. So we just have a landing page to let residents know we're still, the board's regrouping and figuring out the plans from there. But there is an opportunity that they can ask questions or submit comments. There, that feature is still there. So just to give you a heads up, it is live still and can be utilized if needed.
Is that something worth pushing out? Just as a last thing, hey, this is, this is here, submit your questions.
Is there any value in sharing with the public the two presentations that we saw today?
We have that, Lori and I are going to, we've already had that planned at all. We just wanted to wait for the board to get it first and then we're going to do that, that's the next step is to push it out publicly.
All right, thank you, Lori.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so let's move on to the new superintendent evaluation tool. This is, was, way it looks like Sheila and Brian and Sue have been putting in the time and putting in some work on this proposed evaluation tool. So we'll leave this discussion. So how about you, Sue?
I, I
I I I thought Sheila had said she was going to do it.
I was going to say that, but. All right, I I don't know if everybody got a chance to review the information we put out yesterday. Sorry for the lateness on that. I think the main thing I just want to, you know, highlight is that when we started this process, our main objective was to try to, you know, get to be a more objective tool rather than subjective. I think that's more beneficial for us as a board, as well as as for Anna to have it that way. And since we're doing the B legendary training, I think switching our focus on that evaluation, do we evaluate or more on on that as well? So we had talked about sixty percent, using sixty percent of of the evaluation as that B legendary piece of it.
So in in that, if you look at your B legendary framework for objective, I have that in my car note too.
Objective five, isn't it?
Objective four, yeah. Objective four, partially proficient evaluates the superintendent in part on the results and progress toward the student outcome goals and superintendent guardrails using information within monitoring ports, reports within the, according to the monitoring calendar. Advanced is considered superintendent performance as indistinguishable from system performance by evaluating the superintendent on only results and progress towards student outcome goals and superintendent guardrails using information and monitoring reports according to the monitoring calendar. And so the B legendary superintendent evaluation instrument supports both of those things. If you're not at a hundred percent of of your evaluation on that B legendary tool, then you would be partially proficient as long as you're using some of your goal monitoring and the evaluation. And we went through a process over these months, Brian and Sheila, of taking your existing tool that Anna had shared with me back at the beginning of the year and a process of, you know, how would you measure this? Is it board work? Is it superintendent work? You know, what do you want to keep, delete, or modify? And so based on what Sheila and Brian shared in those conversations, I made their tracked those recommended edits in the existing evaluation. And then that cover sheet should have a synopsis of the of the logic and recommendations that Sheila and Brian have.
I had jotted down a few questions, and one was, it's mentioned that we're proposing that this instrument carry a weight of sixty percent of the total evaluation in November. What would we use for the other fourth percent?
So there are two, there are two tools there. There is the B legendary tool that's one page that is would document the progress on the goals and the guardrails. And then the other instrument you have is your existing instrument with the recommended modifications from the ad hoc committee. Now, you don't have to have two pieces. You could have one or the other. You could further modify the one piece to incorporate more of the goals and guardrails. But very consistently, what I heard from Sheila and Brian was, you know, make it more objective and that the majority should be the goals and guardrails.
Okay, that's more clear to me. I wasn't recognizing these as two separate tools. Then what technical tools are proposed? So the this, the B legendary tool, which was, is this one pager with two, the green side and the gold side. That would be an Excel spreadsheet, right? We would, and we would fill that out together separately.
So usually, your superintendent or an administrator can plug all that in. It's basically just lifting off of what was in a, like, for today, you guys progress monitored. What was it? Goals three point one, three point two, and guardrails three point one and three point two. And so you would take that and just put it in. And I'm, again, I apologize, these storms, I have no electricity. I'm doing this in my car from memory. I'm not looking at it. But you would plug in that data to that form. And then that would be what the board would use.
Okay, so then on the other tool, the one that looks both looks different, but it contains similar language as what we they use now. What kind of tool or process do you imagine that being?
I guess we haven't talked about changing that process at all. Okay, that's, we got to make sure the policy aligns with what we're doing.
Okay, I'm going to make one suggestion to board members. And I, I, up until this year, I never, you know, our our pol- our current policy says that each board member is supposed to fill out their monthly questionnaire. And I I admit, I wasn't capable at doing that until this year. And when I did that this year and I went to do my evaluations, I found it extremely helpful that I had kept some notes from from board meetings. And I'll just give an example, like I mentioned to Anna yesterday. The, one of the questions had to do with like seeking grants. And I had totally forgotten that she had mentioned that Ray had gotten a fifty thousand dollar grant. And I'm, there it is, I have that. Yes, I can mark her. That's some evidence that I had. So that was an objective measurement because I had it in my notes. So I find that to be very helpful.
The discussion also included what was board work, what was superintendent work. So when you list a whole lot of inputs in a superintendent evaluation, like the existing tool has, especially if you don't have a way of measuring and monitoring, it gets very hard when you get to your superintendent evaluation to know. You know, like the example you just lifted up, Sonia, of did we do this? Did you, did the superintendent do this, or did the superintendent not do this? And so the, you know, with working with the committee, there's a lot of conversation of how do you want to address that? And there were two suggestions for consideration on like some big buckets, like around finance and around communications of additional guardrails and taking the, all those separate things out of the existing evaluation so that you have some very concrete things that you are monitoring. And and also an apology today, because I have no electricity, I've not had any coffee. So my brain's a little slower. But one of the examples that we talked about was, and this was before your referendum vote, was groundskeeping. And, you know, oh, well, that should be pretty, that should be pretty obvious, right? If the superintendent is up keeping the grounds or not. And I said, well, let me tell you a little story. My dad was the parks board of our town, and he was a landscaper and the, you know, was responsible for give issuing citations when people's grass is too long. And the joke became, your grass wasn't too long, as long as it wasn't longer than Al Domain's grass, because my dad didn't mow the lawn. And so it becomes very, it can become, become very subjective. And I said, and now what happens if your referendum doesn't pass and your superintendent has to choose between heat and lawn care? You know, so that, it was, it's a good teaching piece around how you set your priorities, how you measure and monitor and hold accountable your your administrative leader on those priorities and how they really are more effective as guardrails and as goals than in this kind of a format. Does that make sense? But so that was a lot of the logic behind what what the recommendations are that you're seeing today. And as a matter of process, what I would recommend, like board members, you know, ask questions, you give feedback to the ad hoc committee today. But I don't anticipate you would be, you mean, you can legally choose to vote on it today. But I think the better thing would be to send in questions, maybe set a deadline for sending in those questions to the ad hoc committee or additional recommendations that board members have. And then the committee and I can huddle back up and make further revisions to this before it is brought back to you for a vote. And Anna, and I'm actually want to lift up one more thing about that. I think my, my coaching recommendation would be that you allow your superintendent to decide if she wants her November evaluation to be on this new instrument or her existing instrument. And the reason why is because she's not at the beginning of this evaluation cycle that goes from March to November. And it wouldn't really be fair to, by the time you vote on this in a month or so, to give her something new to hold her accountable to without it having been the thing at the beginning. Although, you know, you already had your goals and all of that, you know, so it wouldn't be unreasonable to choose that.
I agree with Sue's suggestion that we should not vote on this today, because we, it would only be available to once the three of us stayed two days ago. Yes, so I, I I think some good work has been done, but I like the suggestion of submitting some questions. And I think we should, should we just submit them to Anna?
I would, I, I think you guys can decide how you want to do that procedure. But I think it'll be important for Brian and Sheila to have the questions and feedback to be able to discuss with me.
Let me get, go ahead and make this look cleaner. So she's, she's going to do, okay.
So I redlined it for y'all, so you could see, I wanted you to see what the current language is, what was recommended for being deleted and what is recommended to be added, which, so I left it in that redline format for you to see.
I appreciate that. And let's be, to be clear, this is not the exact format that we have raised. But is this the exact language?
Oh, I think, I was comparing the two of them, and the language is pretty much the same. I think some of them are in different orders, but I think it's pretty much the same.
Okay, good.
I didn't really know any discrepancies of major concern.
All right, when, I now dig out the policies for the superintendent though. And then I'll pull up that job description too that was aligned with it, then we can work on those at the same time.
I think I, I think I followed the right.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I believe we, the consensus is we will not take any action on this. All right, there's one more item on the agenda. Items for discussion and applicable action, which is C, to approve the first reading of amended policy. Triple A, educational philosophy. Again, that was pulled up of consent because it contains the board guardrails, which I could want to have some discussion, have that discussion. So I would entertain a motion, which please, Shannon, put this in the correct language in the minutes for a policy first reading, with it would be to approve the first reading of amended policy triple A educational philosophy. Nagel votes that motion. Is there a second? Sire seconds. Is there any discussion? There any discussion? Is there any discussion? Let's have a roll call vote, please. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbuck. Brian Sire. Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sonya Neal.
Yes, motion passed as five to zero, and the first reading of amended policy triple A is approved. School board election is June fourth. Our regular meeting will be moved to June seventeenth by state law. We have to meet thirteen days after the election to canvass the results. So that will be our June meeting, and it will be in the evening. And then Wednesday, July tenth, I think we've had a communication about that with regard to your schedule. So with that, the only item I have for the July, for for your schedule. Yep, that works just fine for me. For the good of the order, I requested that you stay for a few minutes for a board member picture. I'll declare the meeting adjourned at nine oh six AM.